Well, good evening, everyone. It's 5:31. Time for the Normal Public Library Board meeting. And to start off with, I'm going to make a quick announcement here. As the President of the Board of Trustees of Normal Public Library, I've determined that it's prudent to meet virtually due to COVID-19. And so now that we have that piece in, and as we all know, we're going to go through the agenda here real quick. And very excited because we also have visitors tonight. So, um... Oh, I'm sorry, JD. Thank you. Roll call.
Jess Ray.
Present.
Terry Lindberg. Jim Rogal.
Present.
JD Davis, present. Kaitlyn Trunell. Aaron Ripley-Guitarik, present. Pam Lewis.
Present.
Thank you very much. Tonight's agenda, do we have any additions, corrections to the agenda?
Jess, just a reminder that if you wish, the standards discussion can wait now. We have a few more months there if desired.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm making a little note here so don't forget. Pam, were you raising your hand or you just have your arm out?
I have my arm out, but...
Sorry. Just checking.
Are we on?
We are on. We're on. So, uh, would someone like to approve or move to approve the amendments of the previous meeting?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Pam. Do we have a second? Thank you, Jim. We have a second. JD, would you like to call the vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
A roll call.
Okay.
Jess Ray.
Aye.
Terry Lindberg, absent. Jim Rogal.
Aye.
JD Davis, aye. Kaitlyn Trunell. Aaron Ripley-Guitarik, aye. Pam Lewis.
Aye.
All right. Any extensions? Hearing none. Everybody's voted. We're all good. Moving on to the next item. Would someone like to move to make approval of expenditures?
Uh, do you want to approve the minutes?
We just did.
Oh, I thought that was the agenda. Uh, I moved to approve. Let's see here if I can get my notes. Expenses and payrolls. Where's my notes? Expenses totaling $29,104.83 from October 22nd to November 11th. And three October... Do you want the payrolls as well? And three October payrolls totaling $223,867.99.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Jim. We've got a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Would you please, JD, call the roll?
Love to. Jess Ray.
Aye.
Terry Lindberg, absent. Jim Rogal.
Aye.
JD Davis, aye. Kaitlyn Trunell, absent. Aaron Ripley-Guitarik, aye. Pam Lewis.
Aye.
Okay. Well, that's our two first acted items of the evening. Look at us already running right through the agenda. How exciting. President's report tonight will be brief since we have some guests. I would just like to send back once again appreciation to the staff for all they do during these trying times. We appreciate all they do. And thank you to the board members for being here and helping out the community. That's appreciated as well. And at that, I will stop. And we will now go. And do we have any public comment this evening?
We do not.
All right. Well, we thank the public for giving us this extra time to discuss items then. So we'll move on to the next item. Library Director's Report. Brian, what would you like to share with us this evening?
Uh, I'll be brief. And, uh, real quick, we got a couple grants recently, which is great. Digital network access grant to $10,000, which is the maximum more to assess and improve our Wi-Fi, both inside and outside the building. Also received a PPE grant, reimbursement grant. Some other things we'll talk about later in the agenda. But we're back to curbside. Staff are doing well. We're healthy. We appreciate the board's support. Children's librarian Jane Jankowski has resigned. She's leaving us to move out east to be closer to family, which is good for her, but very sad for us. And then just real quick, I was part of the Library Journal Design Institute today, briefly, kind of here and there, different pieces. You know, long story short, libraries across the country are having all kinds of challenges. And there's no great answers. But I think it's interesting to see how, you know, libraries are certainly striving to serve their communities as best we can, which I think describes us, you know, right now at the moment, trying to hold on to curbside as long as we can. That's really important. So it was kind of a somber design institute, I guess. It was a really good events, but definitely tough times for libraries, especially as they look at their space and try to predict space needs in the future, which is something we'll talk a little bit about tonight, I think. So that's it. Unless there are any questions?
Can I ask Brian a question? Is that all right?
Sue, please.
Um, so how many people attended the institute? Because I know that's usually a really big event.
Yeah, usually it's in person. It's limited to about 100 people, I think. And I'm sure there were quite a few more than that today. I just, I was able to attend a couple different sessions. They're all archived, I believe, so we can watch them later. But, um, yeah, just a lot of struggles out there, frankly, and wondering about how to use space and curbside versus drive up, and which is better, you know, drive up windows, for example. Do you bring events in? And, you know, do you have a musical group come in and you broadcast that? Lots of programming. How do you make the most of this opportunity? So, uh, just kind of therapeutic in a way. Very sad at the same time. But, you know, long story short, I think libraries are just trying to do the best they can for their communities, which is a challenge, given some of the parameters.
Okay. Thanks for the update. I was just hoping people were still attending things like that.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
So we'll go ahead and move into our next item, which is the Foundation Report. Brian, do you have any updates for us on that?
I'll default to Pam if she has anything.
Well, we're launching our annual campaign, but you could give them the details. It's exciting.
Okay. Yeah, so actually introduced Joel McReynolds, our Development Coordinator for the Foundation, had a meeting with Sue Hall, who is on screen here, and Peter Pearson. Remember that the Board, the elected Board and the Foundation Board did some work with Peter Pearson back on March 10th of 2020? And, uh, you know, it was one of the... The number one objective was to get a part-time position to help the Foundation move forward. We've achieved that, getting Joel on board. So it was great with Sue's background in development and Peter's in development, too. Just, they know Normal Public Library well. So that was a great opportunity for Joel to hear from them and help us set some goals. And one key goal was move forward with an annual campaign for 2020. And Joel stuffed envelopes today. We have about 350 or so letters going out as of right now. And welcome any additional names that you'd like us to send information to. Well, I'll be sending out an email, a brief email to you that includes a link to donate to all of you to share with others if you'd like. Just trying to get the word out there broadly. And again, really having a focus on trying to get commitments to monthly giving. That's very accessible in terms of the amounts and very easy to kind of set it and forget it. So more information to come there. Good news is that we're making big strides with the annual campaign.
Thank you so much. All right. We'll go ahead and go into new business. We have four items tonight in their new business, of which one has been removed, which was the serving our public. We can look at that at a later date based on what Brian shared earlier with us. So, um, I was going to say, given our guests, let's just dive right into the reason they're here and not make them have to stick around and listen to a COVID-19 update and discussion, unless you really want to. I'm guessing that that might be, you know, more than you need with your own life going on there to hear about what we're doing. So with that in mind, Brian, would you like to get us started? Talk about the strategic planning process?
Yes, please. Uh, I just want to first say how grateful we as staff are for the opportunity to work with Sue and Tony. I, we could do this planning process on our own to a certain extent. I think the product and the process are both a lot better with Sue and Tony leading us. And they have great experience. They're wonderful to work with. Both retired, but willing to help us out, which we appreciate greatly. So thanks to the Board for supporting this. And, uh, you know, part of this is just having the Board committed to planning, helping us move forward. This is our second formal strategic plan, so it's very important to us. The first one's worked very well for us. Tonight is all about the Board's input, I think. So, you know, my goal is to be quiet, not say anything unless there's any questions. And I think it's important to share, too, that we're not really, we're not really trying to solve anything necessarily tonight. We're just trying to find the Board's input and help identify, you know, what are the issues? How do we get better? You know, it's the same question I always ask. How can I get better? How can we as a staff get better? How can we as a organization get better? So we'll get to the solution point, you know, portion later as we develop our implementation plan, which is key. But we really just, it's so valuable to have the Board's input. So I appreciate your time here tonight. Just Sue and Tony will guide you through a few questions. And I just plan to not say anything unless you ask me to specifically. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I'm going to lead off and Tony's going to chime in. Thought we would start out by giving you just a brief overview of what the planning process looks like, because it certainly doesn't look like the last one we did with you in any way, shape, or form. If you recall, one of the high points of the last one was where we brought 65 people into a room and you had architects coming and getting people all riled up about gorgeous buildings. And you all had either just come back from or were about to go on your field trip. You know, that feels now like that was literally eons ago. So when Brian contacted me again and said, "Oh, it's time for strategic planning." I retired three years ago, but I've just been doing projects with people that I like. That's the really nice thing about being retired. Nah, I'm busy. Thank you, no. So, um, but I've always liked working with the normal people and I've stayed in touch with Brian. But so Brian and I had a conversation about how are we going to do this so that it's meaningful and, you know, really takes into consideration where you're at right now, which is living in the middle of uncertainty? And, you know, how can you be at all aspirational with a new strategic plan? And my original thought was that it really needed to be a very practical plan, not so much a big visionary plan. So I called my pal Tony, who has gone through lots of working through challenging times with the libraries that she's worked with. Tony, what was the worst set of cuts you had to do at Phoenix?
Well, you know, the recession hit Phoenix particularly hard. And I think the worst for a one year was about 30%. And that was after two or three years of smaller cuts. So we actually lost a third of our staff, a third of our hours in one year.
So it wasn't that I thought you all were going to be slashing and burning your budgets and things like that. But we knew that this had to be a very practical plan. So, um, and it had to be remote, which is the one thing I really don't like. I like being in a room with people. This is lovely, but I still like the energy. So we set up a process that we've sort of continued to tweak as we go along. First thing we did is we had a couple of meetings with the leadership staff. And we have to tell you, you've got, you have great staff. I'm sure you all know this.
Yeah.
But they're smart. They're fun. They're supportive of each other. They're really professional. So that makes it a real pleasure for us. And the first meeting we had with them was just to say, where are you at right now? I mean, we really haven't gotten deep into your, what you've been doing for three or four years now. And what are the challenges you'd like to go after and so forth? A lot of it, of what they talked about was just the internal stuff. How do we do what we do better, more efficient, with less resources? That's Brian's mantra. Less money, less money. And got really some very good feedback there. And then we designed a staff survey that just be sent out to the whole staff, beyond the leadership team. I'll let Tony explain that a little bit to you.
I tell you, I've done a lot of surveys with other libraries and with my own libraries. And I usually don't say afterward that it was a delightful experience, but this one was a delightful experience. Because the staff was so engaged, so thoughtful about their responses. It seems like you either you get nothing, you know, they respond to the question as briefly as possible and get out of the survey, or they use the opportunity to air any number of grievances that have nothing to do with the planning process. And neither of those things happened here. Staff really thought about the questions we were asking and how they could offer us concrete ideas that could then lead to something actionable. So that was a wonderful thing. We did just an online Survey Monkey, surveyed 10 questions, didn't want to wear anybody out by asking them, you know, 20 questions on a survey. So that, I think that also contributed to the quality of the responses that we got. The responses tended to fall into four general areas that we grouped together. One clearly was not a surprise, customer care and service. Technology, which is almost always for one reason or another going to be in a library's top few areas. Staff development and organizational structure. One, because I think they're interested in it. And two, because we asked some questions specifically about it. The leadership team wanted us to go into that a little bit. And then communications and marketing, which is always a big issue for libraries. I've never had it not come up and be a big issue for libraries. Just give you some of the highlights, as we really want to dwell on, you know, your input tonight, as Brian said. In terms of customer care, the bottom line really was, how can we stay safe and serve our customers? How can we do it when we're doing it remotely? What's the best that we can do? And when we do open up again, how can we keep everybody safe? And what is it going to take to do that for us to operate in a little bit different world? For example, staff brought up, and this will lead us into the next one, technology. Okay, now we're doing these programs and we're doing them, instead of doing them live, we're doing them virtually. But how do we really do that? How do we do something that's quality in this, in this kind of new area for us? Before, it used to be sort of a backup thing, and now it's the main event. And how do we do that? So that was interesting. And also in terms of technology, a lot of interest in how can we best support a public who's now having to rely on technology so much more and in different ways than they did? I was laughing. I was looking at, before this call, I was looking at Christmas ornaments on Etsy, because my children always get a Christmas ornament. I know they're 27 and 37, but they always get a Christmas ornament every Christmas. So I was looking at pandemic ornaments. And I laughed at one because it was just a big circle that said, "You're on mute." And I don't know how many times people have said that to me. So I won't be surprised if I get it this year. But that's a reality. People are having to function in a way they haven't had to before. And I don't think many of us felt really comfortable with it. So that was another thing. In terms of staff development, it was really heartening to see that the staff, they really love their jobs. And not just that, they understand how their jobs fit into the overall mission of the organization. And that was really wonderful to see. And I don't think anyone felt that they had an unimportant job or that their opinion didn't matter. We asked, and so they used their background to answer. And that, I thought that was a really positive thing. And they talked about cross-training. They talked about their reliance on part-time staff. And something that's a challenge, I think, for all public libraries. How do you retain those part-time staff? Especially when you're in an area, you're in a geographic area like this. I am here in Phoenix, but there's lots of different places they can go. It's easy to go from one library system to another library system. And somebody's always getting their pay pumped up. So, you know, you lose people, you've trained them, and then they go someplace else. But they had some really good ideas in those areas. As I said before, we've never worked with a staff who didn't talk about communication and communication within the organization, marketing with the public, communicating with the public. I really have never worked with a library that felt that they had it, they got it right, that, you know, they were doing a great job. I never felt that way. And it's because it's such a big challenge when you serve everyone who walks in the door and you're trying to communicate with them. But staff, again, had some really interesting ideas about how to keep both full and part-time staff in the loop, which is always a challenge when things can move pretty quickly, and how to keep the public up to date on what the library is doing. They had some very specific suggestions having to do with all these areas, including looking at a technology audit. Where are you with your technology? Do you need the same technology you needed before? Or are you going to need a different kind of technology going forward? And recruiting and retaining the staff that you all want. You have an exceptional group of staff. You want to keep an exceptional group of staff. So Sue, anything else? I mean, those, I think those are the highlights.
No. And we took those and we presented them back to the leadership team at the second meeting, discussed them all, and then started finding places that we will eventually put them in the implementation plan, not the high-level strategic plan. So sort of our next step in the process was to talk with you all and hear what you think the library should be focusing on for the next few years. There's talk of doing a community survey. Tony and I have some thoughts on this, not all positive. We think people are being surveyed to death these days and that we're not getting a whole lot of new data. It's almost like you could probably sit down and look at your last survey and plus or minus 5%, get a lot of the same stuff. Although there's been some pretty big intervening variables. So we'll talk about this a little bit later, but be thinking about it. And we had at one time talked about having another group of stakeholders come to a Zoom meeting. And I'm not certain that that is where we want to go, but we're going to talk about it. And ultimately, where we're sort of at with the plan itself right now is that Tony and Brian and I have been talking about, as we look at where, at all the uncertainty out there in terms of the economy and in terms of, you know, you thought probably a month ago you were going to stay open for the foreseeable future. There's so much uncertainty out there. And the impact of today's uncertainty is going to be out there for a good, long time. Should this be more of a transitional plan than an aspirational plan? Should this plan be sort of more compact and focused with more focus on doing what you do better with probably less resources and more efficiently? Still call it a strategic plan, but it just wouldn't be a big visionary plan like the one you had last time. And there seems to be some appetite for that amongst the staff. So we'll get your impressions on that as well. So we're going to be talking to you all, determining whether you're going to do a survey or whether there's going to be anything else that we do. Then we're going to, we are sort of working on a draft as we go. It's easier for people to react to one as opposed to sit down and start all over from a blank sheet. So Tony and I have been drafting as we go along. And then that at some point will be presented to the staff for more input and then sent to you all for approval or revisions or whatever. And then we'll work at getting the staff put together to do an implementation plan for the next year of the strategic plan, the first year of the strategic plan. That'll be sort of what guides their priorities for the next year. So that's the process in a nutshell. So what we want from you today is your candid, thoughtful input on what you'd like to see the library focus on in the next three years. I'd say don't go out five. What your own vision is, what you think is worth hanging on to from the former plan? Because most strategic plans are iterative. They don't just all of a sudden start out with a blank sheet and do a whole new plan. So we're going to ask you about eight questions? 11?
It grew.
And we just, you know, just chime in. And if you don't have thoughts on it, don't feel badly. But again, we just like your candor on this one. So I'm going to start out by asking each of you, because this one, I really would like to hear from everybody. What's your short-term vision for the library? Again, three or four years ago, you were looking at a brand-new building. And that doesn't appear to be happening anytime soon. But what would you like to see the library focus on for the next three years?
If I could just step in for a quick second, I'd especially like to know if there's anything you think they should be looking at in the first 18 months that you think is even more important and should be a priority?
Yep. Okay. Who wants to jump in? Jess?
Getting things started. So, again, talking about the transition, which does sound like a good idea, right? We've got some short-term issues. It's kind of hard to look super into the future. I got a couple thoughts that bubbled up. So one of the things is the physical space that we're currently in. Since we know that we're going to be here probably longer than we may have anticipated, what can be done to maximize it for patrons, for the staff? Brian and the team that he has have worked wonders. But I know, you know, we may have deferred a few things, thinking maintenance-wise, that, well, we're not going to be here in 10 years. So maybe putting in that X, whatever X is, doesn't make good fiscal sense, right? Do we need to rethink some of those priorities as we think about it? And that kind of goes along with, in my head bubbling up, access. Again, right now, people are concerned about, will they be able to get services at the library? You know, what does that mean? Because that's different now, you know? So last March, when Peter was here, it was a different world. Access meant something different. And now, you know, we're spending time doing new and exciting things to provide access. And it's not just, as we have always said, it's not just a warehouse of books. So what does that mean when you access the services of the library? And I think part of that also has to do with, when we talk about access, what about equity and inclusion? And that access means different things to different groups, to different people, and being able to understand what our community needs are and making sure that voices are heard. And I'll stop now, because otherwise I will just keep on chatting.
I will tell you that, this is unprofessional, but I just love you for your first comment about improving the physical space. So, I mean, you couldn't have been a better plant. Pam?
Pam, you want to stack?
Due to, you know, what we're living through right now and, you know, and Brian and every, the staff have been great about, you know, trying to maximize everything we have. And it's just an ongoing process. And with the physical space, we're all, ah, sigh. But schools are hurting, schoolchildren, teachers are overwhelmed. What can the library do to support helping everyone get caught up? And school budgets are going to hurt. You know, what can the library do to partner with local schools and to help those that don't have the internet, that don't have supplies, that didn't participate always in remote learning? Whatever we can do. The other thing is, I think, and this is from personal experience from seniors I know, and that we have curbside and home delivery, but it's been very clear that senior population is not technically savvy and really has found out what being behind technically means when their library isn't, wasn't open. And so what can we do to help them catch up a little bit and learn to use the electronic services that we have? And so those are just two specific audiences.
That's a really great point, because I think seniors are so... First of all, they're having to learn more. They thought their big learning was over.
Right.
And they're having, I just taught an 84-year-old friend of mine last week how to do a Zoom Pilates session. And if you think that wasn't a riot, but she, but at the end of it, she knew how to Zoom. And she called her granddaughter and said, "Can we Zoom this next Sunday?" Instead of, she was just so proud of herself. But you're right, it's, and it's so scary for seniors, I think, because it's just...
And they've, as isolated as sometimes they are, this has been even more isolated.
Yeah, yeah.
And when you talk about, you know, we have video yoga. We offer, you know, a lot of these services, but if you don't... but if you don't know how to use Facebook and if you don't know how to download an ebook and, and you don't know how to adjust to make the type bigger and you don't, you know, all of that, uh, you know, uh, it's just, how can we help them? Thank you.
Great, good idea. Jim, got any thoughts?
Well, I think, you know, building on both what Jess and, and Pam said, you know, in addition to the space, how can we use technology to help partners? So in addition to the schools that are now having problems with, you know, remote learning and, uh, you know, Aaron can say the same. We have a, a lot of people now are saying, oh, well, you know, homeschooling is a lot, I'm doing, we're doing homeschooling. You know, remote schooling is much different than homeschooling. Um, and trying to figure out how we can help, um, beyond just providing those resources that we normally provide. So, you know, part of it with, like what Pam was saying, was maybe partnering more with ARC and things like that to try and, they, I know they've been doing a lot of outreach, but kind of reaching out to our partners, um, whether it's the public schools or whether it's the senior organizations to try and figure out how, how they're dealing with people so that we can help support them going forward. Cause if we're gonna be in this situation for the next foreseeable future, I guess, you know, it might not just be the next three months and then it's gone for good. We have to be prepared for something like this to happen again in the future. And, you know, how do we build out our infrastructure within the, the confines of our, our walls so that we're prepared to be able to go remote again in the future if we have to?
Yeah.
What kind of things are other libraries doing that? I mean, we're doing a lot online. And, and I think the staff has done an incredible job doing that. But are we, are there things out there that we could easily do that other libraries are doing that we just haven't thought of? Um, and, and, and some of those things might be things that we do whether we're back open full-time or not.
Yeah.
We have space to require, we have space constraints in our library. So, you know, are there things that we can do online that would allow us to free up some of that going forward? Or, or do we need to keep one hundred percent of our things planned for in, in the library when it reopens? So, you know, I, I think providing a multitude of resource, there's not an easy answer of what can and should we do over the next eighteen months to three years. But, you know, it's, it's expanding what we can do to help the other groups in the community continue on and continue in our, or our role that we already meet here in, in Norman. So, that's what I think.
Okay, thanks. Aaron?
Yeah, I'm gonna go the opposite direction that Pam went and talk about the younger kids and the technology and the using of it profusely. Um, so for eighteen months, one of the things that, well, going back the last six months, one of the things that is kinda surprised me was seeing, cause I know a couple of kids that do the Dungeons and Dragons and they started using Discord and they've got like a really loyal little group of kids that gets together. And in talking to the parents, what has come out is really cool that going through the library to use Discord, which is, there's a chat app for gamers mostly kinda. But going through the library, they feel so much safer than their kids just meeting people on the internet to do gaming stuff. But I'm not a gamer, I'm not gonna use the right words for any of this. Um, but just knowing that there is an approved adult supervising their kids' online gaming and that those are like local kids that they're interacting with has been just a huge deal for them. Um, so like I could see expanding that pandemic or not.
That's a great idea, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, cause there's, there's just not that many institutions that you, that people feel comfortable dropping a kid off at a class at and turning around and walking away. Like that is not their school. And the library and like Children's Discovery Museum, for a lot of, for a lot of people, that's it. And so to have that kind of presence and trust already built up in the community and have it being transferred to online activities, which is a scarier world than the real world, um, I think that's really cool. And there's a lot that we could do with that.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, could I jump in? Aaron, you started out talking about, um, younger kids.
Well, I think for that, you'd really have to go fourteen and up.
Okay.
To use those kind of apps, um.
I was thinking maybe you were gonna talk about preschoolers. So I wanted to make sure that I heard everything you wanted to say.
I do not wanna talk about preschoolers.
Okay.
They are lovely in moderation.
Okay, Jenny?
Well, I don't wanna talk about preschoolers either. Oh wait. Just, I mean, the, the curse of being fifth, uh, talking about this, is that I agree.
You can go first next time.
Thank you, thank you. So really, what, but what we're, what we're talking about, to sum up, is that we were talking about people who have never used the library, who were struggling to find something to fill the time or fill the need. And then we've got the people, so we, we have new people and then we've lost people because they can't get into the library. They can't have their face-to-face and their physical items, like the, the computers and all of that. And so it's in three months, in six months, in twelve months, both continuing to service the people who are new, you know, who, who have found things like online and, you know, the virtual items. Um, and then slowly trying to get those other people back uncomfortable with the library. It's a, I think it's gonna be a, an, an interesting, as, as we start to open back up and people start to get comfortable, um, not throwing things on the shelf and letting them get dusty because they're still viable. Like you found people who wanted virtual things, maybe they still want virtual. You know, you're, you, yeah, that's, that's enough of that. Finding both people and sticking with them.
Okay.
Um, let's move on and talk a, a little bit about the community, because that's really where library planning starts, with, you know, what's going on in the community. So how has the community changed since the li- library developed their last plan, their twenty-seventeen to twenty-twenty plan, other than the pandemic? Other things that have gone on in the community that we might not know about? And JD, you're gonna start.
Oh, you did that right as my heater kicked on. It's fine, sorry about that. That's where I belong. Um, I, I wasn't here for the last one. Um, but in the community, some things that have gone on, I think, um, maybe people have become more politically-minded. Um, definitely more activism has started. Um, more interest in politics here in town has started. I don't know, that's my take.
That's interesting.
Yeah. Check, done.
Yeah. Okay, who else? Jim?
Yeah, I, 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 I also wasn't here when the last one was done, but, you know, and I moved here back in twenty-fifteen. So since I've been here, I think some of the biggest things that we've seen community-wise, one of that which is, uh, Mitsubishi closed, one of a fairly large employer, and now Rivian has come in. So we're, we're looking at potentially a refill of that, of, uh, of a pretty big employer here locally. Um, and our community is, was always fairly renewable fuel-friendly, I guess is a good way to say it, or, um, econo, or environmental-friendly.
Mm-hmm.
Rivian expanding in the electric car market. We're gonna see a lot more of that. Um, we're seeing more wind farms, more solar farms, more, more all of that in our community. And I think that impacts, um, the residents as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Anybody else wanna jump in? What's the economy look like? No, go Pam.
Well, you know, the, the landscape of, uh, budgets has changed and affluence. Uh, our major employers have gone through a, uh, a reorganization. And, uh, uh, I think, uh, our white-collar workforce has a lot, you know, some of it has relocated. Um, our community's gotten probably a little older. Uh, our retail and, um, sales tax and all of that budgetary, it's, it's tighter. Where, you know, referendums were pretty easy to pass and now they're a little harder. And so, you know, the, uh, where it's, it's just changed. I mean, the, you know, with, uh, the library's certainly, uh, you know, seen, uh, its budgets are tightened and as a lot of government, um, entities have. And this is not unique to us, it's, it's pretty much every town everywhere. And with the pandemic, that's, that's not gonna go away anytime soon. I think we're gonna, you know, we're gonna have belt tightening for a lot. So that's, that's changed us a lot.
Jess?
Uh, one of the things that I know that has changed recently is in the healthcare industry, uh, field. So Advocate Broman has shifted again, uh, from being Broman to Advocate to being Carl. And so, um, I know, uh, from visiting other libraries, hearing that libraries are often ways to induce or encourage people to come to a community, right? So, you know, when you're trying to bring in a specialty doctor perhaps, that a library can, uh, you know, be one of those things of why the community is good. Um, so that's a, a change that may have an impact, may not, don't know, but it, it is a change since you were last here. Uh, the educational fields still remain, uh, good with enrollment and attendance. Uh, you know, Illinois State University has done exceptionally well. Hartland's doing okay and well and, and our, our friends at Only Wesleyan. So we retain a, uh, a, a workforce that, that, uh, is coming out and it, it's available and highly educated. But that means that there might be different needs, uh, and from that community and what their expectations are. So if I stay in the community and I had an academic library at my beck and call and the services they provide, you know, do I know what a, a public library is gonna provide me? Is it gonna be different? Is it gonna, so those are, I look at those as opportunities. Um, and there was something else that just completely jumped out of my head and I'm sure it will come back around on the lazy Susan at some point.
Okay, you can get it for us.
And by the way, when I say lazy Susan, I'm not talking to you, so just.
It's okay.
The thing that's round, that goes around.
Those bad jokes have been made about me before, so. Um, uh, anything else? And, and has there been any shift in Bloomington that has impacted Normal?
Well, there was a change in the leadership in the library.
Okay, has that affected the Normal library?
Uh, I don't wanna put words in, in, in Brian's mouth, but I think, uh, you know, it, it, it's been interesting because since you were last, one of our trustees actually served as an acting director in, at Bloomington. Uh, and I know that Brian and the current director, uh, are in close contact, not saying that, that, that wasn't occurring before, but it certainly feels like, uh, there's a lot of effort made to make sure that we're, we're all on, on similar playing fields, uh, and trying to keep some communication. And I, I think that that's important because I think a lot of people in the community think that, you know, the libraries, they're the same entity. They don't understand, the structures are different, but what we do, actually do try to work together, right? So the, the structural differences, the fact that their union, Normal's not, the way they're, uh, receiving funds is different from the way that Normal receives funds. And so I think from a community standpoint, people think that, well, it's, it should just be one big library, cause it's a one big community. But at the same time, they don't realize how much work goes in behind the scenes to make it look seamless, to make it look like, oh, it's so easy to combine those kind of things.
Sue, I'll, I'll just, I'll just add a little bit of context, something that's happened, uh, due to COVID really. So I would say that our, our regional, uh, libraries have grown much closer, uh, through COVID, uh, because we, so Bloomington, Normal, Champaigner, Banda, Peoria, Decatur, Springfield, we, we speak, um, every two to three weeks or so. We were, we were speaking every week earlier in this. Uh, Jeannie at Bloomington and I speak about once a week typically, um, otherwise as needed to. But the, the central Illinois region of libraries, at least in terms of the directors, has grown much closer, uh, during COVID, which is, uh, really valuable, I think, good, good for all of us. Uh, but it's just something that really wasn't expected. But, uh, in terms of that perspective on community, that, that regional library community has grown stronger.
Cool. Okay.
Yeah, you wanna move on? Cause I know time is, time is going by and, um.
So this is gonna be our speed round?
It is. It's like speed dating.
Yes. So, um, each of you give me, uh, what does the library do really well? And Jim, we're gonna start with you and go across the Hollywood squares.
Um, I, I think they've done a really good job of adapting. Um, I think that's the, the one thing over the last six months we've seen is they've adapted very well, everything that's been thrown at us.
Okay. Aaron? JD?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're going this way and I was going the other way. I'll leave you alone, Sue, go ahead.
Wait.
Oh, yeah. Uh, the library does a really great job of building a foundation so that when things like this happen, uh, there's not, and I don't mean like foundation with a capital F, I mean like a baseline, where, um, when things like this happen, I, all he, all Brian has to do is say, this is what we're doing and the library's like, got it.
Great. Jess?
I almost forgot to unmute. So I, I think one of the things the library does well is that they, the, the staff truly cares about the community that they serve. And in doing so, they, they do try to find ways to, to meet needs that are out there.
We'd agree. Pam?
Um, I think I'm most impressed on, uh, how responsive the staff and Brian are to new ideas. Um, they're willing to listen to anything. And if there's a way they can make it happen and they know that they can serve a, uh, patrons better, uh, they'll try it, they'll do it, they'll research it. And a lot of times when you offer a new idea, they've already looked into it and that, you know, they are up on trends, they're up on new ideas, they're up on what are their libraries are doing, what's good, you know, uh, what works. Uh, so I, I just think they're really progressive and responsive.
Great. Um, let me see, Caitlin, you just joined us.
Yes, I am so sorry, I got distracted with an emergency from work.
Oh, that, that never happens to anybody else here.
So I apologize.
No, no worries at all. Um, we're gonna ask you out of the gate, what do you think the library does really well?
Um, I would say just in general, everything that has to do with customer service, um, or anything when it comes to, um, you know, being, being flexible and making sure that we're taking care of, um, the patrons', patrons' needs. Um, I know every time that I've ever needed help, everybody's been willing to bend over backwards, um, and I hear that all the time.
Right, good. Um, okay, Tony, I'll do the improve, what could they improve as well?
Did we hear from everybody?
We heard from everybody, I think we did. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Aaron, okay.
Everything shuffled, Metallossia.
Um, I would say public communication, or communicating with the public.
Okay.
Well, staff would be so happy to hear that you said that.
Yeah. Especially lately, when the, the library's open, no, it's not. And I know that the staff only hears about the miscommunications and I hear about the actual communications, is why I wanna put that out there, because they only get to see the angry people banging on the doors. They don't, you know, hear people talking out in the community or get messages about, you know, the fact that people did get the message and are not banging on the doors.
Yeah, thank you.
That's great. Okay, let's start over again, uh, and we'll go to the shuffled new way. Jim, what could the library improve on?
Oh, that's a tough one, um. I can't think of one at the moment, sorry.
Okay, we can circle back to you, JD?
Uh.
This is a good sign, Brian.
Uh, they're, uh, pass.
Okay, Jess?
So I have a bias and it's very difficult for me to think of something in which you know, again, we can all find places that we can do a better job on something in our life, but there's nothing that's glaring that stands out to me. Uh, you know, when I talk with with people in the community, I'm not hearing, oh, this is awful, we need to fix this. Uh, when I've been drafted, I've not seen anything. So I'm I'm hard pressed to find a a glaring, we really need to, I I would go back to things I'd like to see spend more time on, but that's not a, an issue of and it's improvement that's needed, but not because of anything's going on. So I, it's hard for me to separate those two things. Like when we talk about access and uh, you know, inclusion and things like that, I think we could improve on that. Um, but I but I don't, I I might wanna be very careful to say, you know, I don't think anyone's not doing what they should. I just think that we might wanna spend more effort and thought in that area.
Yeah. Okay, that's good. Pam?
Um, I would say our website, and I know that's one of our projects that we're doing now. Um, you know, it's 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 been a, it's tough and it's expensive and uh, uh, to make it more modern, responsive and uh, attractive and usable. And uh, so you know, so many people now we're having to to try and adapt to everybody, you know, was using computers and then, you know, tablets and phones and to try and get technology that people wanna order books and and watch videos and listen to eBooks and whatever. And it's all, it can be done from so many different kinds of devices. It's really hard to uh, keep up with the, all of these fast changes and uh, um, so I would uh, I would say that and in piggybacking on something Erin talked about with the younger people, I found uh, I have a lot of teachers and family members that uh, are in the school system and what they found, almost to a a person that kids know how to use their phones, but now that they've gone to remote learning, they do not know how to solve problems. When they come up on problems with technology. And so they're just like, I can't fix this, there's something wrong. And they they don't have problem solving with technology. They know how to use their phones really well and almost every teacher, counselor, principal I've talked to has said that uh, they were really surprised that they thought they were more tech savvy. And so uh, you know, so tech, you know, technology's always gonna be, you know, an upfront issue and that we've gotta, you know, try and keep up with.
And you know, not just certainly, you know, not just the, your particular community. I've read some research about this as well that says that um, for a lot of kids, their knowledge is very superficial. They know what they have to know to do what they wanna do every day. Um, which up till this time didn't include going to school every day, you you know, using their devices to do that. Um, but when you push them into something a little bit deeper than that, no.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Interesting. And it's also reassuring that it's the kids as well as the older folks who can't do that problem solving.
We're not alone.
Yeah. Erin?
Ask, ask my son-in-law and I ask him to fix everything.
Yeah.
If I didn't have my thirty-year-old son, I couldn't work, so.
The the younger kids are very app savvy and they're not device savvy.
Right.
They know, they know how to do that app as well.
That is a great way.
You ask them, hey, can you save your TikTok video on your hard drive? They just look at you like, the what, what? Um, but anyway, um, I I can't think of anything glaring other than the Pepto Bismol color scheme in the basement.
I want pictures, Brian. I haven't been there, so I want pictures.
Okay, Caitlin?
Um, thinking about it, if you had asked me that, you know, a few years ago, I would have said that it would have been accessibility. Um, but there's been so much work that's been done over that over the last few years that I feel like has really improved it between the bathrooms or just moving shelves or getting shelves that don't go up as high. Um, you know, there's that um, room on the second floor. And so I feel like um, there's been just so much headway on on that front. Um, and of course, I'd love to see it keep going that direction. Uh, but besides that, I I will say probably the times where I personally get the most um, frustrated or lost while using library services with the website. Um, it's just can be difficult to find what it is that you're you're looking for.
Okay, good. Next question. Tony?
Um, you know, you have a copy, Brian sent out a copy with uh, this agenda of the current strategic plan. Um, are there parts of that plan you'd like to, the library to continue to focus on? Um, and would you change any of the goals as you look at it? I think that I I don't think, like, the goals are so, I don't, I'm not saying broad, but they're exactly what the library should continue to do. Like should continue to enrich the quality of life and inspire and engage and build. Um, I I do think the strategies uh, in the current time will need to change. Um, but again, I mean, they they may end up sounding the same, but the will know, like, people will know that the meaning behind them have changed. I guess if that makes sense. Not, it's not a cop-out. It's not, oh, let's just copy this one and throw it up. Um, but it's I, you just understand that life is different now, but we still need these basic things.
Right. Yep. And that's the direction that we're kinda taking the existing plan towards, so yeah.
Exactly. Okay, who else? Jess?
Can you repeat it one more time for me? I'm gonna make sure I answer.
Sure. Looking at the existing strategic plan, um, are there goals that you think the library should continue to focus on? Uh, do you think there are things that aren't covered in there? Goals that should be added to that plan?
I'm I'm, no, I'm I'm gonna stop and not waste time here. I'm like, I, there's nothing I could think of right now. It'll come come back up. But I would like to pause for just a second because since we have, one, to thank anyone who's watching this still. As we talk about the strategic plan from the community, thank you so much. We appreciate your engagement and we hope that you continue to engage with us. I wanna read something real quick too, because they don't have access necessarily to the documents. Uh, and I shared it in the chat, so I don't know if people who are watching this can see it. Wanna talk a little bit about the mission and vision statement that we use is on that strategic plan. Cause that I think is very important. And the mission statement is the Normal Public Library is a valuable educational and recreational resource that enriches the quality of life for community residents. And that the vision statement that we have had in the past and I think we continue to have is the library is a catalyst for literacy, learning, creativity, innovation, and we connect, reflect, and engage our community and are strong stewards of our valuable resources. And I think as we're talking about the goals towards that, it might be helpful for the folks who are uh, still with us, and thank you again, uh, who are not part of the meeting to hear that as well.
Okay. Thank you, Jess. Caitlin, what do you think about those goals?
I like the goals and I like the strategies. I still think those are very, still very relevant. I think it's really um, just the tactics to accomplish those strategies that have have really shifted.
Okay.
I'm totally taken aback. Like, the one that says create spaces that welcome and inspire all library users, who would have thought three years ago that that meant every corner of the internet? Yeah.
Doing things. Exactly. Yes.
Still very relevant, but it's totally different.
I've I've heard Animal Crossing is really popular with with the the libraries' animal crossing parties.
Yeah, that's the one that stuck out to me too, is that spaces, like, that's conveniently broad, the way that was worded. Nice.
Anybody else? Anything you'd you'd change or you wanna make sure we keep those moving forward?
And again, we're we're changing the language on them to make them more focused. Um, so that this plan won't look like we just put another couple of years on it and and send it back out to you, so.
What, can I ask what we're doing with goal number four?
Uh, yeah. Um, we're cha- oh shoot, I wished I'd have printed out the latest. I'm I'm gonna see if I can find the latest iterated version. Yeah, have you got it? Tony, at hand?
I could help.
Can you help?
Yes.
Okay, Brian, go for it.
So um, we shifted away from, actually, we 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 talked about the term spaces. Uh, regardless of where they are, is the direction that we're going with that goal. So I think uh, like JD and Erin were saying, it's wherever we providing our services, whether it's it's in person, whether it's digital, if it's in the library, outside the library, we wanna focus on what is attainable to us, what we can control, rather than things that are beyond our control. So while um, and we'll talk about this a little bit later, we're still, we we still wanna stay engaged and making progress towards a new facility. Uh, but we're not going to uh, not improve every other way that we can during that time.
No, I get that. I just wondered if we were changing the wording of that goal.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, that, yeah, okay. So any new goals that you'd throw in there? I mean, it sounds like what I'm hearing is, you know, you're really doing everything really well. You're adapting really well um, at running a library that you would hope would look very different at this point in time. But is there anything brand new that you'd focus on? No is an okay answer. Going once, twice, moving on.
Okay.
Okay. Um, we want your thoughts on a community survey. And Brian has said that you all are supportive of that idea. Tony and I have never had a problem holding our opinions to ourselves. Um, and so when this idea came up, we said, you know, you you do community surveys on a regular basis. Um, A, do you think you're gonna learn anything new? Um, and B, um, people are getting tired of surveys. I um, I it's, I didn't realize the medical community did so many surveys. I had uh, two hips replaced this summer. And I bet I'm over a dozen surveys about what that experience was like. Um, the next one, so help me God, I'm gonna make up really nasty things to say. It's just frustrating. So I believe there's.
I Sue, I I kept track um, this this week because I've I've been to the doctor, I've been to physical therapy. Um, I shopped online and did some of that. Um, I think I've had half a dozen emails easily in the last three days asking me my opinion. I've deleted all of them um, because I'm so tired of answering surveys. And yes, I didn't realize medical community was either. But, and I go to physical therapy every week and every week I get a survey.
So anyway, our bias was that there's just some survey fatigue out there and because this is a transitional plan, do you really wanna take the time and the effort to do a survey? That said, we also said you could do a survey, just do a short survey. Um, and ask some, you know, five very different kinds of questions. So we're we're tossing it back to you. What do you think? And it and it, this may be your only opportunity for getting broad-based input into the strategic plan. So we can definitely be talked out of this. We're into this.
Yeah, from a reflective listening moment, but what I hear you saying is that the ROI on on doing a survey may not be there. With the return on investment, we may not actually get an actionable or information that's uh, something that we can move forward with. Is that what you're saying?
You're good, yes. Perfect.
I think it could be quick and dirty. Like, I I do think we'd miss input from people who normally wouldn't reach out to us. Um, so even if it's something like, you know, what what's the first word you think of when you think of the library? Then they, it's just the first word, okay. You know, you can learn a lot from just instantaneous answers like that and not open-ended questions like, what can we, like, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna make fun of your question, but what could, how could it improve? But name one thing it could improve on. And then they know they don't have to go into depth. It's just, okay, one thing, the website. Um, of these three things, what are the highest, what is the highest priority? Uh, just really uh, quick and dirty.
Good suggestions. Yeah, and we are not dead set against it. Uh, so I mean, I think you've just given some really good suggestions. The challenge is always, how do you get to the non-users to get them to do your survey, but um.
Yeah, and how do you get them to open it when they see that it's there?
Yeah.
With an online survey, how do you get them just to open the darn thing?
How do you even get it past their junk mail filter?
That's, yeah, that one too. Apparently mine's not working very well.
Well, you could get your staff to stand outside as they're taking books out to people and whatever and say, yeah, don't get your books unless you answer my three questions, so.
I know at my job, we've uh, inserted things that needed to go out to large amounts of people into the city's water bill.
Yeah, yeah. At least uh, go to the website kinda thing. Jess, more thought?
Yeah, so I I guess, again, it's because I was talking about access and hearing voices from the community. I think it's important that we have some way to be able to make people understand or know that they can reach out. Um, I don't know at this time how, again, the non-user is the most difficult piece. I'm not sure how we would be able to hear that voice in this current environment that we're in, right? In the past, we we found ways of putting people at grocery stores as people came out or, you know, unique ways of kind of capturing that voice. Uh, and so so maybe, again, with the transitional concept, maybe that's a voice that we understand we may not be able to hear as loudly as we would like or to be able to get, but maybe we could still reach out to some of our partners that are out there and and ask them for the groups that they represent, if they can, perhaps, you know, again, smaller group, less lifting. And just let them know, we understand there's COVID fatigue, but we're here to hear you if you wanna reach out. Not even requiring a survey, but just letting people know, we care, we wanna know. And you know, if you have something, here's how you can let us know your concerns or your thoughts.
So just so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and feed back to you because I'm not quite sure what I heard. Are you saying go to our, go to the partners and say, what do you, how would you represent your constituents and you do the survey? Yeah.
Or it doesn't even have to be a survey, just ask for input, right?
Okay.
It's like, is there something we're missing, right? A- as you look at your constituencies, whatever that might be. Um, you know, I'm gonna make one up here, uh, because I was in 4H as a kid. Maybe we reach out to the the local 4H group. Uh, and and the the extension office and go, hey, uh, is there anything that we need to know from your constituency that would be good for us to know as we plan our future?
Okay. Good idea. Anybody else? So uh, can we have a show of hands of people who would support a quick and dirty survey, maybe one? Um, she votes early and often. Maybe uh, at twice, yeah. Um, so people would support a survey in some form and so.
What are, what in, what information are we actually looking for? So, you know, for what information do we not think we have? And I'm not saying we have the information we need, but you know, before I could get vote on, not or, you know, give an opinion on that, it's just like, what kind of information are we looking for? Are we trying to affirm what they like most about the library and what they don't know about, what they don't use, um, what they'd like to see changed? I mean, I, you know, so I'm, I and what are we looking for and how how would that affect either a goal or a strategy? I, you know, I'm just, I'm not opposed and I'm not supporting a survey. I just would like to know what we're trying to find out.
Well, I think you raised some really good questions there. Um, because I think asking those questions about what does the library do really well and um, even even what could the library improve? I mean, you you saw that you struggled with the question of improving. I would bet you could give me the top ten things that the I would bet you could give me the top 10 things that the library does really well that people say about it. So I think they, I think it's gonna call for some very unique questions. Um, yeah, I always like to question what one thing would you change about the library? Because I think it, it gets to, it gets odd people out of the thinking box. Um, but, you know, did you, did your feelings change about the library during COVID? Um, that's a, that leads to a value response. Um, I, I, I don't, I don't really. Have, I don't, I'm not comfortable saying I know what I do with your survey now and I don't think Tony is either. But if you all wanted to give some deeper thought to this and in the next, and before Thanksgiving, send us some potential questions. We would love that. And we're not trying to force our job off onto you.
And what kind of a sample size are you looking at that gives you a representative view of the community?
I think if you got 5%, you'd be very lucky. I'm seeing most survey returns now closer to 2% or 3%.
Of, of the entire community? So this would be everybody in normal?
It would, um, because I don't know if you're able to break out age groups. Um, so if you could break, and then you'd have to go into demographics. Um, and those are almost a waste of space question for something like this. I don't know. What do you think? Brian, were you gonna say something?
A couple of things, just to back up, I think, um, we're, you know, our concern is we want an opportunity for input. That, that's the goal of this, uh, survey discussion. So. If our first goal is community engagement, you know, we're, we're seeking a way to engage the community in this planning process. Because we wanna know what is, what is the community feel and think about the library? So. More than anything, I think the question is how do we provide that opportunity? Uh, it's difficult, certainly more difficult now than it was last time. I think we had about 1,600 responses to our survey last time in addition to some other engagement. Uh, we've done focus groups in the past, which worked really well, a challenge now, obviously. Um, so that's, there's some challenges there. Good news is. Uh, with our number one goal being community engagement and having hired a full-time community engagement manager and having others to have more engagement, more outreach, et cetera. I think that we're in a much better position than we were four years ago to probably get this. Provide these opportunities for input through partners, et cetera. And, and bring that into the plan, even though the process might be a little bit different. Um, but where we were going with the survey was, based on our last board meeting, I brought this question up and it seemed like there was direction to. Uh, to have a survey to provide that very broad, uh, for the most part, easily accessible opportunity to provide input. And we, our intention as staff was to reach out to any partner group that we have and ask them to provide input for those who wouldn't have access via technology, et cetera, to complete a survey. So. Uh, the goal is community engagement, provide an opportunity for input. How that happens, you know, we're not sure the best way, but that's the overriding goal, which matches our first goal and our current plan. Engage the community, welcome them in this process, bring their voices into this process, which we really wanna do. Um, it's, it's a challenge, no doubt. Uh, so I don't know that we're seeking information as much as we're seeking the opportunity for input so that, that everyone has an opportunity for input. You know, we don't know what we'll get. Um, Sue mentioned before, we, we will likely, you know, hear a lot of the same. In terms of the library, I think that some of what's changed is the circumstances, you know, COVID, et cetera, may, might change how people use the library. You know, it, it does because we're closed now except for curbside, so the choices are, are more limited. But it's that opportunity that we're focused on and the engagement, uh, that we have, I think, can serve us well. And, and we've, I've gotten to the point where we're acknowledging, you know, this process is, uh, it's a challenge in a number of ways. Uh, we're limited. So within those limits, how do we make the best of it in terms of engaging the community, providing an opportunity? And then, you know, getting input that is, uh, meaningful to the process.
So can I ask a question as we think about this? We, we're talking about the survey, the survey's a tool, right? So let's, let's step back away from the tool and what is it that we're trying to work on or fix with the tool or address, right? What you're just saying. So really is this an opportunity? We're looking for a way to do a gut check to see, and I, and I'm gonna be, try to make this simple. Here are our goals. Are, are, is the library beating these goals in your eyes? And if not, what are, what's not working? What's, what are we, what can we improve upon? Is really it, those the two questions that we're trying to get to? I mean, I, I understand what you're saying about we also wanna engage people to have an opportunity to let us know those things, but. Is that really what another piece of it is, right? I'm trying to think of this as an actionable, because if it's to engage the community, a survey is one way to do it, but we could engage them in other ways, right?
Absolutely. And that's, uh, I, I think that we would, the nice about the survey is particularly if it's very few questions, then it gives us a little bit of data to, to compare. Uh, but then we can take it, we can offer other opportunities too, um, you know, via our social media, et cetera. Um, we don't know how much contact we'll, we'll, we'll get back. You know, we know that there's a lot of fatigue out there. But if, if someone really has something to say, you know, they could say it today. You know, they don't need a survey or this process to let us know how they feel too. So that's just another way of, of thinking about it too. So. You know, we don't know, honestly. That's why this is a really important part of this process is to know. What does the board support in terms of moving forward? What's the right? Way to at least offer opportunities for community engagement to, for the public to provide their input? And, uh, it, it's certainly different than it was, uh, four years ago. Um, but, but right now, what are the efforts that we make, uh, to get that input, to get that engagement? Um, and we don't know the answer, honestly. We can put the survey out there, we might get 500 to a thousand responses. Um, you know, we don't know. So we're seeking the board's direction really on this. Survey or no? If not, what, even, you know, regardless of that answer, how else? Uh, what it, what gives the process integrity in your opinion, uh, moving forward so that we can look at the, the end product and say. You know, we did everything we could to get community input into the survey or into this, into this, uh, plan. Another thought is, given the unusual circumstances, maybe we make the best of the information that we have now. Um, we typically have a pretty good read on the community, I think. And, um, maybe a year from now, we commit to a more formal engagement process when the parameters have loosened up a little bit and we work that into the plan. Just another option. Some things that we can't do today, maybe we can do a year from now, uh, and then we're in a better situation.
I can speak for myself. I appreciate the, the, I, the, the fact of the survey fatigue. Because I got something from a professional organization I belong to that I do need to respond back to. But I just didn't have the energy today to even open it. Um, with all the other things going on. So. And that's something that I feel I need to do from a professional standpoint. So on a. You know, someone just wanting to give an opinion, what I also find, like you said too, is that people tend to provide that opinion. If they really think that there's an issue, they, they're going to be willing to share, well, for a good and for bad. Usually it's the extremes. We don't capture the people who are in between on those things. So I, I, I will speak for myself. I'm, I'm okay with the concept that we're talking about this as a transitional plan. Because the unique nature that we find ourselves in, that we're gonna need to revisit this if things change in the future. Uh, hopefully they will. Um, and then go back. So I, I'm, I'm okay with not doing a survey and finding other ways. Whether it's using what we have in terms of, uh, engagement already to sort of help validate those questions that I think we're trying to do. Are we meeting the goals? If we're not, we need to know. And then, then we'll figure out, well, what do we need to do next? And that may be more engagement with different partners in the community. So I will shut up now.
Anybody else changing their minds one way or the other? Aaron?
I.
I'd play poker with you any day.
I know. I, I hate surveys so much, but I love data so much and I'm so conflicted about it all. So I don't play poker. I play euchre and not well.
Yay, euchre.
Off the fence, woman. We, we really need some solid direction from the board on this one. You gotta give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down. And what do you think about Brian's idea of a survey in a year? Pam, go ahead, sorry.
My concern is so many of the surveys aren't well done. And they don't give you the information you need. And if you wanna compare where we were four years ago to now, then you'd almost have to ask the same questions.
Right.
And to compare and contrast of, you know, have we made progress on those goals? But if we're, uh, you know, if we're trying to, so, you know, my, my concern is the tool. And, you know, how much can be done through, you know, social media or do you offer an incentive for people to engage? Or do you do it by which now, you know, we're not gonna be seeing many patrons because the library's closed? Um, you know, so I am concerned about why we do it, how we're gonna do it and who we're going to present it to. And, and I don't have any good answers for that, but I, uh, the questions are so hard to develop to, to get the information that you want. Without leading them and without being too literal or too broad or too, and I know I'm persnickety on that, but I, you know, I. You know, to say we're gonna do a survey, that, that's just, then, you know, there's just so many other, um, concerns with that. I, again, I know you need direction. If, if we're doing the entire community, are we just doing people that, you're trying to find people that don't use the library? Are we trying to, um? Yeah. There's just too many open questions. I, I, I agree with a lot of what Jess said and I, you know, the down and dirty appeals to me as well. Um, if we're just getting a general sense of attitudes. Um, you know, and will that give us what we need? I, I don't have an answer for that. And I guess I would say back to the staff. What are you looking for? What information can we get from the community so you can serve them better or they can, we can provide more of what they want? And, and, you know, maybe they, they would have a better answer. So, you know, I feel like I'm doing a top-down thing when. Um, the staff thinks they know their patrons, so they would say, I would like to know why people aren't coming here or aren't using us. And then we go from there, but, you know, I, you know, the staff might be able to give us a. Um. Better idea of what information would help them do their jobs or the, or leadership, you know, the library leadership, I, you know.
Billy, yes.
Yeah.
But I'm okay with being outvoted. You know, I under, I do understand. I see all the other points. I, I do believe we're, we're a different library. We're in a, well, we're the same library in a different time, a different, uh, awareness. Um, and we're, we're looking at different goals. We, we're not looking to build a, a library like we were three years ago. So really, uh, asking the same questions wouldn't be, it wouldn't be apples to apples. Um, and I, I am of the opinion that if we have to give the people who don't come to the library, the avenue. To tell us why. And if they don't take it, they go down a different way, then they, it's, it's like voting. You know, you, you shouldn't, you shouldn't complain if you don't do it. Uh, they still will. That's not gonna change. Uh, well, we have given you the opportunity. We've given you quick and dirty questions. You decided not to take it. Or we found something out that we didn't know.
I think for me, I. I think that if we took a survey now, took a survey a year from now, that the answers regardless are going to be very different because it's hopefully going to be. The world is hopefully gonna look a bit different, um, any year from now. So I don't think that the results of a survey done now would have like really long lasting implications. Um, because hopefully the answers to that would, would, you know, a lot of them would change or at least the context of us asking the questions would change. Um, here in like a year. I think the thing that is, what, that feels important to me. That a survey could accomplish, but there are other ways to do so would be one to, to be asking the opinion of the non-library users. And to, to intentionally just ask and let people know that they can come to us with feedback. Because if, you know, of course you can always email the library or whatever else if you have an opinion. The point is that I want us to be proactive in asking or saying, hey, you know, we, we do want your feedback and we do value it.
I almost think that, um, if we do a survey now, it almost needs to be of the current users. I mean, the, the people that are engaging with us currently are the ones that have been relying on us for the last six months. And will be relying on us for the next, hopefully only two to three more months, but more likely five to six more months. In an online or virtual fashion. And, you know, what are we not doing or what do they want us to see do over the next few months? To carry us through until we're open full-time and back to whatever normal becomes. Um, I'm almost more concerned about what they need that we aren't doing. Cause there's, I'm sure there's, while there's vocal people out there that will tell us when we do something wrong. There's not as many vocal people that will tell us, hey, maybe you could try this or maybe you could do this. We have this void here. Um, you know, I, I, I would almost be more interested in that, at least in the, in the short term. Um, and then more of a, a larger survey of our non-users further down the road. When we're back to normal and when we can actually say, hey, come to the library, this is what we provide. What do you, why aren't you coming here? Kind of thing.
So is there, are, are you all right if we then take this issue and your input back to the leadership team? Because they're, they're gonna have to, um, help us design or design themselves this survey and get it out there. Um, and it's gonna take time. Um, are you all okay with them sort of ultimately chewing all of this and making a final decision? Yeah? Okay, good. All right. Um, three questions, two questions that focus, a couple of questions that focus on you. Um, I'm watching time. It's, uh, three minutes to seven. How about if we say, let's definitely wrap this up by 7:15? Does that sound reasonable?
Okay.
Okay. Um, so you all met with our colleague Peter several months ago and talked about advocacy. Has there been any movement on that issue of advocating for the library, the political decision makers? Have you moved forward on that?
I think the silence is telling.
I think it is. Okay. Is there a particular reason?
COVID. We, we had plans. I'm, I think it was me and Terry. Who was it? You know, who were supposed to, you know, be part of a, like, going out, meeting with people. Doing some outreach like that and I, people had other things to worry about.
So is it still an interest?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
So, um, what are your goals as a board for the next few years?
What would you like to do different or better?
To finish the strategic plan.
Oh, smart guy. So I'm gonna couple that with the next question, which is, are you doing anything about succession planning? Are you doing anything around, um, making sure that, this is a good board from the engagement that I've had with you. And I, Tony's shaking her head for the last hour and a half. You're a good board.
Absolutely.
How are you, how are you gonna make sure that you stay a good board or even be, um, a new and, uh, an improved board?
I think one of the challenges there is, you know, as an elected board. Making sure that members of the community know what that process is, that they can run for the board. Um, making sure that folks know that that's an option. Um. That would be one way.
Yeah, just in general, letting them know that we exist or we're more than just emailing us when they're mad. I mean, I still haven't even gotten that. Um, just that, that we are there and that we are listening. And that goes, everything from a, a town member to a staff member, that it's okay if they wanna reach out to us. that it's okay if they want to reach out to us. Not that they would ever have a reason to go around Brian. Um, but if they just wanted to say, hey, what are you doing for us? Hey, how are you advocating for us? Um, hey, bring us cookies, something.
Hey, Brian, have you ever featured the board on the website? Done a, meet our board and here's who they are and you too could become, have you ever done anything like that to sort of highlight the board and who the members are?
We haven't. Uh, we'd be happy to, um, and kind of related. We're, we're in a, a period right now, just, uh, well petitions can be taken out now and signed. So we're in this pre-election phase. Uh, they're due in early to mid-December. So I, I've had an idea of kind of a, uh, a packet, I guess, for, uh, those who are considering the opportunity. And I've, I've tried to share some information recently with the board, just to make sure they have the, kind of the mechanical pieces. When are things due? What do you need? How do I find it? Um, candidate's guide, that type of thing. So, I certainly think that we could promote the opportunity better. And I think highlighting the board, maybe less so on our website, but just kind of tell, tell their story. Highlight a board member occasionally on, um, social media, for example, to kind of let the community get to know their, their board members and know that they're here for the community. I think that could be fun and, and have maybe some more reach rather than just putting it in our website.
Okay. Uh, last two questions are kind of linked. Tony, you want to take them?
Sure. Um, knowing that a new facility is, um, not going to be likely built in the, in the near future. How should the library optimize its current facility? So let's start with that one and then I'll, I'll go to the second part of that. How should it optimize, you know, something it hasn't done yet perhaps, uh, optimize the current facility?
JD?
By, uh, first thing, I mean, just by continuing to understand that it's not just the facility anymore. Um, that facility is a, a broader word, that facility is community, that it's a, a bookmobile. It's an event. Uh, it's a virtual meeting, um, continuing to do that like, like they've been expanding so far.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
Who else? Pam?
Um, this is an area I don't have much of an opinion, you know, no one better than Brian can squeeze, uh, s- any, the square feet and the display and, uh, the signage and, uh, sales space. And, uh, you know, so I'm, uh, you know, I'm, I'm very complimentary on what they do. Uh, we might, uh, publicize the additional parking lot more. Um, I, parking has been one of the big issues in, uh, and I'm not sure, and I know people do use it. But, you know, I think, you know, over the years or decades, we've, you know, lost patrons or, you know, been inaccessible because they just see parking as an issue. And, uh, we've done a lot to fix that. And I'm not sure if everybody knows, uh, that it's easier to get to us. There's less walking, uh, it's very accessible. And, um, you know, uh, if you haven't tried us in a while, give us a try. We, we've got plenty, you know, plenty of parking here for you.
That's a great idea. Absolutely. Caitlin?
I, I got so caught up in thinking about the parking that I blinked on the original question.
It's okay.
That's, that's all right. Uh, knowing that you're likely not going to be building a new library in, in the near future. How should the library optimize its current facility?
Um, you know, I do really like all of the stuff that they've been doing off-site. Um, it's always really fun when I'm at an event or something like that and I happen to see that the library's there. Um, and I think that it, it means that we can still be engaged with community without taking, um, up our own square footage. Um, I also agree that they've done a lot with the current space. Um, I worry sometimes about the staff being, being squished, um, in the back because so much of the space is, um, you know, gone towards other things. Um, so I, I do, you know, hope that the staff doesn't feel too claustrophobic in the amount of space that they have to work with. Um, but they've, they've done a really excellent job trying to, to squeeze out every little, every little bit that they can out of that building.
Okay. Jim?
Yeah, I, I don't know how better to optimize the space that they have, given how much has been crammed in there. Um, without losing a lot of the, the, the highlights of what we have. You know, I, you know, if you take away from one little spot, you're, you're, to give to something else, you're losing that spot. So, you know, I, I think, we're not using a lot of that space now, but it, it's probably more important going forward for the outreach, like, like Caitlin said, outside of the library. More remote, more bookmobile access for people and things like that. Um, and how best we can make that work for the community as large, as opposed to the actual physical structure.
Okay. Erin?
I was just going to say bookmobile, but I've heard it twice already. Um, the only other thing I can think of-
Okay, we're keeping track. How many times we hear it?
I'll invite for bookmobile. Um, I, I think the only thing I can think of is expanded use of the community room. And I know we've talked about that, you know, pre-pandemic and the long, long ago. Um, about that being like a rentable space, but that, I mean, there's just all kinds of hurdles with that. Um, but just making that, I don't know, booking that more often. Not so much for the events that it hosts, but for the eyeballs it gets in the door. So when people come in to go to a totally unrelated thing, I don't know, a Tupperware party in the community room, but they don't usually use the library and they're like, oh, I want that book. I want that book so much, I'm going to fill out that paperwork.
Okay, and Jess?
So piggybacking on that, I think that, that is an area where if we aren't going to be moving anytime soon. I think somebody brought up the Pepto Bismol at the basement. Um, you know, we, thank you. And it, it, it is, if, if that's going to be where our community room is, that is an area that perhaps we could make a little more inviting, uh, and, and make it, uh, you know, bring it up to date a little bit more than, than what it might currently look like. Um, I think we might want to consider the intentionality. And by the way, I like the, the bookmobile ideas that some other folks did. So if you are keeping track, that's a great thing. Uh, the intentionality of the use of space. We know that different demographics use the space differently. And so, uh, when I was last in, Brian happened to show me, uh, some work that was being done over the teen area, for example. You know, and we know, I, I happen to have a teenager, that they're a little louder and they, they congregate in a different way when they are in, um, in the physical space. And so, um, you know, it, but that, that also then there is those people who come to the library that are looking for a different experience. And how do we keep them both being able to be in the same areas and not bumping into each other in a bad way? You know, um, and so that would be a, a, a thought. And then of course, uh, Caitlin had brought up earlier and I'll, I'll echo. Uh, I love the fact that we were making, um, from an accessibility standpoint, the, the lower shelves to make things easier for people and, and giving, you know, so that, uh, if you're in a device, you, you can get around things without worrying about bumping into everything. And, and, you know, all those different, um, things that we've been doing. I think we could need to keep that intentionality there and continue to do that. Um, and I know there's the things that the staff would love to see, like line of sight and being able to see if there's someone in the stacks who needs help. And, you know, at, at what point we need to have those tough discussions of, at what point, again, we're not a warehouse of books, but we do need to have books, uh, for people who are physically there. You know, we want to have a robust collection, but where's that happy medium of the collections, the appropriate size? And we don't downsize too much to be able to get things down a little bit higher. Where's those happy mediums? And, you know, again, the intentional thought of that as we're thinking about staying in the space.
Right, right. Okay, last question. Hey, Tony, before you go, Brian, is there anything more you'd like to hear on this particular question? And, and can, can I reflect back to the meeting, uh, with the planning team? Um, so one of the things that we talked about with, with the planning committee is, um, maybe looking at doing, um, uh, a short-term and long-term facility study to see how can you live in the current building? And how, what would 20 years from now a new building look like? Because you could invest, you know, a quarter of a million dollars if you could come up with the money or a hundred thousand dollars or whatever, and make some significant, um, improvements to the current building. How does the board feel about that? Is that a fair question, Brian?
I think so. And, and just a little more context there. So I, I threw out the question. I, I guess something that would help me, um, is, you know, I, I think longer term, I guess. So say we're in this space 15 to 20 years, to throw a number out there. Uh, to make sure that, you know, if we, we do a facility master plan now, we look at, like now we're talking about upgrading all of our lighting, for example. There's a lot of lights in here. Uh, there's a lot of wallpaper, a lot of Pepto Bismol, et cetera. So there's some, we get into some big numbers here. So if we, if we take that, uh, that step of really getting that well-informed plan, looking at our facility. Uh, we really have two facilities too, keep in mind, with the 1972 and a 1992. So, uh, we've taken really good care of them, but how do we get, make sure that for the next 15 or 20 years, we're making the right choices? You know, longer term, sustainability, et cetera, cost, obviously, return on investment. Um, all those things considered, how do we make the right choices? Providing the best spaces for the public, the best spaces for the staff that we can. Some of it's cosmetic, frankly. You know, I think, like the Pepto Bismol comes up a lot. We could certainly make the basement more engaging, more fun. You know, a lot of our branding, et cetera, is really fun and vibrant. Uh, we could, we could bring more of that into the facility and it would feel different, I think. Um, so there's that piece, that kind of how does it feel? Then there's the how does it function piece. We could provide better furniture for staff, for example. You know, if we're in smaller spaces, we can make those spaces more functional, I think. So I think the facility master plan would give us that nice roadmap, how to optimize our current facility and, and be realistic about, um, you know, I think we're here longer than 10 years. So I would plan personally, you know, a 15 to 20-year horizon is what we look at. And then make a good solid plan. We could put budget numbers to it. And then we know that we're making well-informed choices.
Okay. Okay to move on, Sue, to the last question?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you go.
So how should the library continue to engage in conversations with the, the town leaders and with the community regarding funding for a new library? Because this is sort of your job, I would think, as well. Exactly. So Jess, what do you think? How should the library do that?
Well, we certainly have tried in partnership with the town by having a, a committee in which we've tried to interface with our council people. Uh, we've tried to keep our, and again, this is what we're currently doing. I don't know if that, that's really what you're asking, is current or what we should additionally be doing. Um, I know many of us as an individual, uh, and within the confines of open meeting acts and all of that. You know, as an individual, I might see someone individually, uh, happen to bump into them in the street. And it's an opportunity to have that conversation again about, hey, um, you know, where are your thoughts on this? Where are we at? What might you be doing? Um, you know, that's something that we can do. Uh, one of the challenges has been, uh, there for a while, we actually had some very good interactions with, uh, other community stakeholders such as the council, where we were able to meet in person and do some things within the open meetings act and, and be able to come in and have, have some of those discussions. Unfortunately, this past year, uh, given the circumstances, that has been not something that was easily done, right? So that, that's a challenge. Um, and, and the town has been pretty good about saying, hey, here's what's going on in the community that just, since you're interested and here's our plan. And, you know, we're hoping that you're thinking about this too. That, that's been good conversations. Um, but again, I think because of everything else on, some of those things have stalled. And maybe it's just a reboot.
Okay. That's fair.
Well, we've had, we've had a subset of, of board members and a subset of council members that met regularly on this topic, did we not, Brian? That represented the board's views on-
Last Friday.
Right. So we have an ongoing discussion with, you know, people that represent, you know, uh, our interests and the, and the community's and the patrons' interests. And we, you know, wanted to make sure that, you know, the, the voice was the same voice. And so, um, you know, that's, that's an ongoing group that meets, so.
Sorry about the heater again, but, um, I, this was, this is partly on me because I am on that committee. Um, I think we need to come at it with a lot more intentionality. Uh, I, I think we, Terry and I currently, and, you know, whoever that may be going forward, um, really need to spend the meeting before. It needs to be an agenda item. What are we talking about? What are we focusing on for this next meeting? What do we want them to know? Because I, I would say that it's very easy right now for the town to brush us off as that committee because it's, we come in and we're like, okay, what's new? And nothing's new, nothing's changed. Um, I, I think it's good to, to be in their face the four times a year they're going to let us be there. Um, but I, I think that we need to start coming with three or four concrete plans. Like, okay, here's our, here's our one year, this is what we want. Here's our two-year, this is what we want. Here's our 20-year. Remember, we're still looking for this 20-year. Um, I think it'll help us be more focused, um, and I think it'll help them be more focused and realize that, I mean, we're not just asking. I mean, we, we mean it, so.
So take some of the vagueness out of that.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And certainly that's where, uh, facilities master plan could help you because there's a lot of data behind those plans. And more see is out of the air. There are reasons you're saying what you need.
Yeah.
Um, okay, Erin? We're starting to have technical difficulties.
No, it was me not being able to use a touchpad because my hands are really cold. Um, like, I, it's not something I've done. Um, the only avenues that I'm familiar with are people who've been on the board recently, like, um, Sarah Grammer. And just knowing them, but also knowing that the library is already a priority for them. Um, but I don't know, maybe nagging our board alumni. Or quitters.
Anybody else? I'm trying to be cognizant of the time.
On the, uh, ILA conference that was a couple of weeks ago, um, the legislators that were on there suggested that when you talk to them, and it doesn't just apply to legislators, it applies to any elected officials or any group, really. Come to them with a specific ask. Don't come in and say, well, we need money, period. You know, come in and say, we need X, Y, Z for whatever. Whether that's, you know, local municipality elected officials or, um, Dan Brady or Bill Brady or any of the other elected officials that represent normal. We need to be more engaged than just the legislative breakfast that we have. Um, you know, the capital bill that was passed a few years ago, or a year and a half ago now, that had $45 billion in it, there's, there's money in there for, for grants and things like that. We need to be a little more proactive potentially with trying to get some of that out of Springfield. Especially with, uh, all the budget shortfalls that we're seeing, um, because of COVID. Um, if there's any more money that comes from the federal government or from, from Springfield potentially, we need to make sure that we, we get some of that money. So reaching out beyond just our local stakeholders, but, uh, a little further away, even our congressman.
Brian, and then I think you want to wrap it up?
Okay, um, real quick, I agree with what Jim just said. And I think, you know, I think the library planning committee, which, you know, uh, Sue, uh, and met with that group, uh, last Friday. So Terry and JD were there, as I was too. And I think structurally that, that group makes sense, you know, it, it, it works well. Um, I do wonder if we had a strong advocacy plan in place. Um, I do wonder if we had a strong advocacy plan in place with regular traction, how that would impact, uh, the effectiveness of those meetings. Uh, you know, I think it would help things move along maybe a little more. Um, and then regarding funding, we're, just so we're all on the same page, we're in this circle of, um, you know, well, is, how much can the library raise? Well, we're told we shouldn't try to raise money privately until we have the town's commitment. We can't have the town's commitment because there's not money available. And then, you know, if we go to other legislators, uh, you know, how, we're just trying to find, that local commitment would be a great, great first step to help us then take steps forward, I think. But that may not be possible, like Jim's saying, maybe maybe that first step comes elsewhere. And and if so, I think that's, that would help us locally, certainly. Uh, but I think the key to all this is the advocacy, to actually help it really move forward.
I agree with the advocacy.
Pam? I think some, I don't, I'm not talking about formal training, but I think we need help in how to be effective, right? Effective approaches, uh, timing, uh, what the ask is, uh, you know, I I just think that that just doesn't come naturally. And, you know, we're not used to dealing with government officials on a day-to-day basis or, you know, whatever it is. But I just think, um, you know, helping us to be better advocates. Uh, it could be, you know, done through email or whatever, I mean, or Zoom, whatever, but, you know, maybe just some help.
Did Peter share, um, an advocacy, putting an advocacy program, uh, piece of collateral how-to with you when he was here?
He shared what's worked for him recently, which I think was was helpful and some of the results there, but, um.
You're talking about something more specific and local and strategic? Sorry, I'm putting words in your, Pam, what do you, is that?
Well, I think we need to be on the same page of, you know, how we're approaching people, what we're asking for, how we talk to them, what they like, don't like, I mean, you know, you know, you went to a breakfast saying that they really listen to people that thank them when, you know, uh, things, you know, they got things, you know, and that's just really unusual, they don't get thank you letters. And I'm talking about, you know, tactical, practical, uh, I don't wanna say tips because it's a little more involved in that, but, you know, what works, what a, what's advocacy that works? And how does it work for libraries? How do people that are successful at library advocacy, how do they do it? In this, in 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 a city our size, you know, not Phoenix and not Minneapolis-St. Paul or, you know, a hundred thousand people like Wilmington Normal and, you know, with the, you know, so just more of a how-to.
You know, if we, yeah, Jess?
So I, uh, one of the things I wonder is, is if we're leveraging our foundation. I know the issue of of talking about when do we do fundraising, but I think the foundation, uh, and this might be a a product of our Midwestern-ness, right? Not wanting to to push things sometimes. But I think it's hard if you don't hear as an elected official, right? We were just talking about this earlier, if you don't hear from constituents that something's important, you don't always know that it is. And when we're talking with the council, well, we're elected to do that, right? And so they know we have a vested interest, but the foundation members and some of these other folks in the community, you know, we've not gone to them and said, you know, we need your voice to be heard too. Um, and so I don't know, a-again, also trying to be respectful and and and, you know, do things that are going to be, you know, functionally working. Um, you know, it it, would that be something that would be helpful in getting a needle to move slightly, right? So as as the teaper of the purse strings, if you start hearing from more and more people outside of just the library council, uh, the the board, is that, is that going to give you an impetus to think more about a priority in terms of where things are from a funding standpoint or from a community standpoint?
You know, Brian, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off, Brian, go ahead.
Just as I mentioned, just a reminder that Peter had the same advocacy discussion with the foundation board that he did with the the library board. And I think, you know, at the time, we, um, we asked the question, how do we best tie those two efforts together? And I think that's, um, you know, we could link those efforts and be strategic, I think there's a lot of value there. Something that that's definitely a goal moving forward, I think advocacy for each group, then advocacy, how do those two efforts intertwine to be most effective and most efficient, I think, too?
The last thing you want is two separate ones going on.
Yeah.
Um, I would be, I'm gonna throw out there that, you know, once this part of the process is over and outside that process, I would be glad to pull your advocacy people with an interest in advocacy together and do a brainstorming at putting together an advocacy plan. Um, and I'd just do that for you because I love you all, so, um. Uh, so if that's, that's a sincere offer, if you think that would sort of move the effort forward, so.
Yeah.
Peter would only-
We'll get to that tomorrow, Sue.
Do that, so. Um, I I think we, I I think we got a lot of great stuff that is gonna show up as, um, strategies in this transitional plan, um, and some with a to-do list for the board. Um, um, so, um, I think, I I will thank you for the very good time and the good input. It was enjoyable. Um, Tony, anything to you? Brian, we'll let you wrap it up.
Thank you all so much. I I wish and hope I have the opportunity to actually meet you in person someday. Um, and, uh, you're like the staff, uh, your input has been really thoughtful and we appreciate that, it makes our job just a whole lot easier, so thank you.
Brian?
Yeah, I just wanna thank you both, uh, this has been great. I think, uh, that I I hope the board has found it valuable to you, and I wanna thank the board for all their input. I think, uh, this is really, uh, you know, a key, key moment in our planning, just to get us all together and talk about the future. And, uh, we have a lot of good news, I think, you know, in terms of the library and the community. We just wanna take that momentum and we just, we always wanna do better. So I have lots of suggestions that we can do better, so we'll work with those in the plan.
Thank you so much, this is great. Thank you.
Thank you all. Good night, have a good Thanksgiving.
Good night, everybody. Yes, happy Thanksgiving.
Bye, Sue, bye, Toni.
Bye.
Thank you, thanks, Toni. And thanks to those who are still with us in the community, watching at home, or watching this at a recording later down the date. We appreciate you being with us as we do our strategic planning. And we certainly appreciate, uh, Sue and Tony for what they came and and worked with us today. So on our agenda, uh, we now have, we're going into COVID-19 update. As we all know, we've gone to curbside, uh, Brian, anything else in addition that we need as an update on COVID?
Uh, just real quick, I I wanna thank the the board for your support as we make these changes. Um, we don't take them lightly, and they're they're not great announcements to make, unfortunately, but we want, we're gonna keep staff and the public safe, so your support means a lot. Staff have done a great job on transitioning again. Locally, other libraries are are going curbside as they are statewide, so, uh, it's it's become really quick. And we we try to stay a little bit in front of that, and I think we did a good job of that here most recently. So, uh, we just wanna keep curbside going, if we can keep curbside going, we feel really good about that. So that's our goal, take every step we can to keep everyone healthy, have have staff be sa-safe and make good choices throughout the holidays. Uh, some of those choices are difficult, you know, uh, but I think if we can just bring everyone back safe, um, we wanna keep, keep these services, especially curbside, going, so, uh, we appreciate your support there. Um, no other update really regarding COVID. We're not accepting book donations at this time, we we think that's a a service that is not as essential as curbside. So we want to focus on curbside right now.
Right. Uh, next on our, uh, business is executive session approval, executive session minutes, section 2C21, which is an action item. Uh, JD, anything you wanna throw in on that one?
As in like, doing a roll call and going into executive session?
Yeah, any, anything else other than that, is that's all we need to do, right?
Yeah.
So-
I thought that was like a trick question.
No, no, it, so I'm, I, uh, let's go ahead and I assume someone would like to move that we do so? Thank you, Erin. Erin is moving that we do so, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Pam. So, uh, JD, if you would do, and Brian, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do I interrupt? We, uh, we have to have a verbal on that, because we have to have the reason, the associated reason to go into executive session, please.
So Erin, could you restate? We'll wait for Erin's touchpad to recognize that she is indeed human.
Erin, I'm moving that we're going into an executive session, we're approving.
Second.
Thank you.
The the section, section, uh, 2C21 has to be stated, sorry.
Okay, so we're moving into executive session, approve 2C21, is that right? I don't do this often. I got this, I got this. Um, I've moved to approve that we move into executive session, section 2C21 to approve the minutes from the October 28th meeting.
Second.
I agree with these things.
Erin, Erin is seconding that, so that's what I heard. And the best part about this for anybody, yeah, watching, is that that this is for about a five-second thing that's a, so. It's a wonderful bureaucratic moment.
Just a reminder, so John will cut the, uh, live YouTube feed, and then Jess, you could let us know when you're ready to come back.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Will do. Thank you so much, so I think, uh, JD, you have to do the roll call now?
Several times, yes. Jess Ray?
Uh, present?
Terry Lindberg, absent. Jim Rogal?
Present.
JD Davis, present. Caitlin Trunell?
Here.
Erin Ripley-Gitarik?
Here.
Pam Lewis?
Present.
And we move into executive session.
Okay, John, you can, uh, cut the feed, and for those, before you cut the feed, for those who, uh, might be watching or, uh, watching as a recording, we'll go to executive session. We will take care of what needs to happen there, we will come back. And according to our agenda, we have a unfinished business, which I don't believe we have any, so there won't be anything there. Uh, there's an opportunity for suggested items for the next agenda, uh, and then, uh, reminder of the next meeting date, December 16th, and then followed by an adjournment, so. All right, John, if you would stop the feed, please?
All right, feed is stopped.